It's all like it's already been started. We are so lucky to have Representative Owens here with us today and thank you all for coming in person and joining us for this round table. So that we could present what we're doing, what's going around the lake, what's happened in the past, what's been here in the present and what we're doing in the future. And just give this overview so that we can support each other and be supported as well by our good representatives. So with that, why don't we go around and just quickly introduce ourselves really fast? And we'll go ahead and talk with you.
Mark Johnson with Lee High City.
We're just Owens, your top.
Holly Sweden with the Office of Public.
Perry Peterson, Office of the Council.
Brian Torgerson, Director of the Provo Airport, sitting in for Mayor Kupsi and Isaac today. And they regret that they are previously obligated in Salt Lake today. Welcome to the Provo Airport.
I'm Lisa Shepherd, I'm sitting in for Commissioner Tom Sackovich.
I'm Jamie Barnes, for Forest Fire and State Lands, looking for Ben Dyerman and Joel Ferry cannot be here today, but he sends the pillows to you.
I'm John Mackey in the Department of Water Quality here in Salt.
Wayne Bradshaw, I do Government Affairs for Rio to the Canada.
Devin Murphy, I'm Congressman Owens, new legislative director, most recently worked for Congressman Blake Moore before that Congressman Rob Bishop, before that Chris Stewart, so happy to get closer to home.
This is some accomplishment.
I'm Sam Brager, I'm the Programs Manager for the Utah Lake Authority.
Hi, I'm Hillary Hungerport, I'm a Professor of U of U and Governor appointee on the Utah Lake Authority.
Chris Collins, our Governor's Springs.
Carolyn Lambert, Mayor of London City.
And Eric Ellis, Utah Lake Authority.
Julie Thorne with Bay Harbor. Awesome. Well, I'm going to need to let our executive director kind of launch us into the discussion and then everybody can fill in.
Yeah, so all that Sam, yes, what I'm hoping for is that as we go through this, this is kind of a summary of all the things that we're working on on Utah Lake. So we'll kind of briefly discuss some of the issues that we've dealt with, where we are today and some of the goals for the future. But we're talking about programs and issues that many of you around the table are working on, so jump in at any moment. And our goal is that Congressman Owen, at the end of the discussion, will have a really good understanding of what we're facing on Utah Lake. And potential opportunities for federal partnerships through either education or water programs or transportation. As all of these things kind of are issues and things that we're working on on the lake, so.
Everybody, but I just saw a state.
Sure, hi, sorry that I'm late, got a little confused and got really scared about walking upstairs and like someone coming out. But my name is Kenan Tyer, I am the Congressman Senior Legislative Assistant, I handle all of our natural resources issues. Which, so in terms of like water, it is all me, so I'll be a lot of those specific issues when I contact in DC.
Fantastic. Can I just say this, we have a remarkable team, a very precise one, like the guys from DC and forces district. For those who don't know, I spent a year and a half campaigning to be part of TNI. Just have an idea that this was happening, but not really knowing. But the more I've had a chance to study and appreciate you guys taking that tour, that the mayor took us on a tour a while back. I'm very excited for the lake, very excited in our district. And we have a remarkable team, very innovative team, we're going to do our best to really bring the potential that the lake can be like. So thank you guys for your engagement and we're just looking forward to being a big part of it, sure.
Thank you. All right, well, let's, let's work our way through, so, so just to kind of. Briefly go over the new Utah Lake Management Authority Plan, or yeah, Management Plan. We kind of decided to break it up into three main topics, ecosystem, recreation and community. We'll just kind of talk through some of these issues as we go through, so we'll push right through. So for ecosystem, we look at water quality. John is, John Mackey is going to talk a little bit about our implementation strategy shortly after we finish this. We work on invasive vegetation with a broader arrangement of partners. And then fishery and wildlife has some challenges on the lake as well, so we'll talk about those. So right now, we're part, we've partnered with the Division of Water Quality for three, four years now, working on a water quality study. And John is going to have some information to report back on that, but the main goal of that study was to figure out. How do we get nutrients in Utah Lake down to a level that they can support the beneficial uses of the lake, which are recreation, aquatic life? And then our downstream users, which at this point are agricultural users. And, and that study kind of developed over time and the main goal was, is still to come up with that number. But also, we have come up with some other strategies that are kind of outside of just the nutrients. That could, and the nutrient regulatory system, non-point sources that could be enhanced through incentive type programs. Over time, to reduce the overall loading of nutrients into the lake. And nutrients just, you know, are one of the major ingredients in what feeds our algae blooms on the lake. So water conditions, temperature and food source really are kind of our major contributors. And so if we can, if we can control some of those, that's what our goal is, you know, we can't control the temperature much, but some of these issues are definitely things that can be worked on. This is just kind of a Gantt chart on where we are in that study, so we're getting really close to wrapping that up. And excited to kind of start with the implementation that we'll be discussing later in the meeting. This is just kind of a report, just a snapshot from the habs dot utah.gov. We have algae blooms on the lake throughout the summer, they come and go. When we took this snapshot, we had a couple of isolated blooms. Currently, the last report that we got, I think today they're verifying, but it looks like blooms are, are much more expansive right now. Conditions must be just right for, for sustaining those and, and we're hoping that over time, we can have newer big blooms. And in smaller areas instead of these expansive ones that really kind of effectively shut down use of the lake. This summer and next summer, we have treatments scheduled to begin. In the, in the past, you see on the left there, we had a group called Sea Clear doing treatments. We have a different group on board this year using similar type technologies, but they'll be treating in our Utah Lake State Park, which is down just west of here. And then at Linden Marina, both of these marinas are areas where people are often swimming and interacting directly with the water. So hopefully we can kind of target those areas on an ongoing basis. With this kind of Band-Aid approach through treatments, while we work on the long-term bigger solution, which is getting our nutrients where they need to be, so that we do not see those large scale.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So do those funds for the treatments, are they state or federal?
Right now, they are state.
They're state.
And, and the, well, it's, it's not cheap to do treatments. And so at this point, really kind of stretching, we, we can treat, you know, isolated locations where we know people are swimming, but figuring out some. You know, lake stabilization or something like that, something that would keep the nutrients from, you know, constantly getting up in the water column. When you have a windstorm and stirs both the water and the bottom of the lake, get a lot of nutrient up into the water column. And then when that wind dies off and the solids drop out, you have a great recipe for a bloom, you know, more lake-wide. So any, any kind of water quality type programs that could aid in, in larger kind of or fully tech treatments would be something we could explore. Lakeshore vegetation treatments, Utah Lake is not unlike many others in that there are invasive species, fragmites being the primary culprit. That invades the shoreline and makes it a less healthy, less native type environment. And so for over a decade now, we've been working with Forest Fire and State Lands and the county on reduction of fragmites on our shoreline. And here's just a couple of examples of the fore and afters, the program is working phenomenally. There's still lots of work to do, but, but there's 70% of the fragmites that once invaded our shoreline is no longer there. And, and of the just under 10,000 acres of mapped shoreline that has had fragmites. We're treating maybe 3,000 to 4,000 a year, and that's everything, so that's going around the whole lakeshore historically. You'll see that map there to the left, we hit with all the different colors. We were only able to treat just small sections at a time from year to year, and so you wouldn't get back to the same section for probably three or four years. And by then it had long established again.
So how, how are you removing this? What, what is a treatment? What, what exactly?
So two, two parts of a treatment, we fly on an herbicide with a helicopter. Just have a contractor do that. And then we work with Weegon County, we acquired a couple of free marshmasters, they're kind of an amphibious Florida-type machine. That can both float the water and get into the muck and it's, and they're very capable. And they go through and mow it down after it's died and they work all year round kind of. From about a month after that herbicide treatment, all through the winter and into the next spring, they're getting around the lake mowing, because that's a much tougher ask to mow than it is to fly it on.
So the herbicides are killing it and including the roots.
Yep.
And then they just mow it down and it, you know.
Yeah, in fact, you know, there's a lot of research on this, and so if you treat right at the end of the summer. You, you impact both the seed head and get down to the roots, because they, they'll propagate both through both mechanisms. They, they should have shoots that come out through their root system, so.
So is there a federal nexus right now to, to how you guys are approaching or strictly state or need to do that?
At this point, it's strictly state.
Okay, we, we just had this conversation with the every coach roundtable. And I, I think if we can kind of change the conversation discussion to water mitigation of the fact that they take so much water. The fact that I think they had mosquitoes now are coming back.
Yeah.
Was one of, it's just recently just talked about, and also how's, how's impacting migrations of different species. So if we can change it to where that is being kind of the forefront. Then maybe because of the nature of Congress right now, that might be a way to get some sympathy and some support.
That's an interesting point, because migratory birds are.
Yeah, thank you.
Are a major factor, they, they come to both the Great Salt Lake and Utah Lake for feeding and nesting. And when you have fragmites stands on the shoreline, there is essentially no nesting out of that for those birds.
And what was, what was this, we, we just found, it was mosquitoes, they bring.
Was not.
Was not. Now, just, yeah, so you just found a actually, that's back, there's something you just found at some place, so those are the kind of things we can, I don't know, have to give more attention from both sides of the.
Especially in this year, because the eight years of flooding mosquitoes that have come like worse than in here.
Great. So that was here, right, the west of that was down in Utah Lake.
We've had it. But nearby somewhere down south. Going forward, what we've done to kind of hone in on, on effective treatments on the lake. This big machine on the bottom left is our marsh master. But we're also now, they're, they're pretty cool looking, and we exist right now on the back of that is a cedar. And so when there's areas that are not growing back with invasions, we can get out there and see proactively with wetland and woodland species, so that we get the stuff that we want coming back in. We also are using drones to target, not only to monitor and kind of tell us where we need to be doing our treatments. But also the upper one, the agress, is an agricultural drone and you load it up with a tank of herbicide. And if you have a, a big area with native vegetation that just happens to have a patch of brag out in the middle of it, you don't want to drive our tanks through, through the desirable vegetation. We can just fly a drone out there, treat that area and fly back. And so it allows for much more precision treatments in the areas where we're starting to see problem regrowth.
So like 70%, 70% of, of the shoreline has been.
Yeah, we're, we're, we don't have frag in 70% of the shoreline now. And it, I mean, it just kind of comes back periodically throughout, but, but his, but what, 18 years ago, there was a wall of fragmites around just about the entire shoreline. So major improvements. A couple of other issues that we've worked on over the last decade or more. The June sucker program has been working really hard to improve both the habitat leading into the lake. Both the Hubble Creek and the Provo River, so that June sucker can survive, right? You know, for the last. They, they were put on the endangered species list. And then a huge effort went into restocking these species and improving their habitat. And just a year and a half ago, they were downlisted, which is a major hurdle that rarely happens. And the completion of the Provo River Delta project is kind of, you know, the hopeful solution to allowing June sucker to reproduce naturally. So instead of, that's kind of the last hurdle in order to de-list the species is that it's, it's surviving on its own. This Provo River Delta restoration site has been almost completed, the Utah Mitigation Commission is a federal program. That has developed this, recreated this delta on the Provo River. And it'll be a huge win not only for June sucker, but for other fish species and for recreation, as it has trails and water trails throughout quite a gorgeous community facility here in Provo.
What's the timeline on that?
That is done next year.
Next year.
Yeah, and that's, that's a big project. It's been, it's been on the books for nearly 20 years in the making, and so this is exciting times. They did a ribbon cutting, so to speak, they used a big excavator to breach the river to go from the existing channel into the delta just earlier this year. And then they're just wrapping up the final construction details right now.
And the population of the carp, how, how are you doing with that? I know that's been a big issue of, are we making, you know, any headway or?
Some, so, so the populate, the, the fishing effort, the commercial fishing effort was hugely successful, they were able to reduce the carp population by 75% give or take. But it's, it's an ongoing issue, you know, when you remove a major portion of the carp, they respond by getting bigger. And help here, and so the program is looking at innovative solutions to targeting them, not just as adults, but also maybe the young fish. But it's definitely something that maybe even as a nation, we need to figure out. Which solutions are working best, it's a problem across the globe, Australia is doing cool research on it. But it's something that we hope to support the June sucker program as a, as an authority on keeping those carp numbers down, because it really is a. Kind of a crucial issue, it, it, they root up the vegetation on the bottom of the lake, they make it difficult to have effective restoration of those plant species. And you don't have those plant species habitat, fishery struggle, so. There were, I just, I'll add that the, that the downlisting of June sucker in Utah Lake. Has allowed the Division of Wildlife Resources to work on a fisheries management plan. When there was an endangered species in the lake, the, their jurisdiction essentially shifted to US Fish and Wildlife. And no, no real management of the fishery was taking place, aside from typical fishing, you know, license rules. But now they are able to put together a fisheries management plan and start looking into stocking the lake again, because it is a incredibly productive lake from a fisheries standpoint. And it's on the verge of, of becoming a blue ribbon fishery. Any of those types of moves could be a major win for the valley and the lake itself, so. One more issue that maybe 10, 10, 12 years ago, northern pike were illegally introduced into Utah Lake. And they're starting to take hold, and that is another issue that we're trying to work through is, is piker are a very. Predatory fish, they, it seems that they prefer June sucker in their diet. You know, things are sometimes way, way against you. But, but it's another one that, that they're being tracked, they're adding tags on to them to figure out their habits. And then, and any fishermen or anglers that catch one, there's a kill order on those. The one, a kill order on them, so you don't, it's, it's catch and don't release. But yeah, yet, yet another issue, but, but I guess I would, I would point out that when you have a healthy ecosystem, when your shoreline and your submerged aquatic vegetation is. Established and doing well, you can have some of these predatory fish and. To desirable fish and every, everyone's happy, it's when you start to limit that habitat that it stresses the, the balance in that ecosystem, so. So we're working, one of our goals will be to work heavily on reestablishing that vegetation, so that they have plenty of habitat to share. So talking a little bit about public access, so dredging in our marinas has been a, a major tool in the past. It likely could be something that would be very helpful. Utah Lake, because it's a shallow lake, it can be very difficult, especially in lower water years, for boaters to access the lake. And our marinas are the most susceptible to that elevation change, because they're on the edges. And so if there was a system or a program in place that could help with focused dredging in our marinas and maybe other areas that have high concentrations of nutrient. That would be a big win on the water, both the water quality side and the access. As our marinas, you know, they, they become unusable, maybe at six feet below full. Boaters start running the ground, if they're trying to leave the marina and they can't access the deeper areas of the lake, so. Over time, we've had great success with legislative support. Just in, three years ago, we had 27 million invested in Utah Lake. And we're putting those dollars to, to use right now on, on access enhancements. We've got multiple marinas that are being upgraded, one that's being added that you visited the edge of in Saratoga. But those types of efforts are, are costly and, and the funds have to be spread on this large lake. So again, motorboat access type programs could be very helpful on doing, kind of completing these master plan enhancements that we have. On our marina and other access points. Just two years ago, we were able to get a marina camera network installed around the lake, so that from an access standpoint, people can just jump on the computer. Look at the marinas and see which one is the least busy, so that they can choose a marina to go to. And they also have car counters, so that we can monitor where the traffic is going and, and develop marketing, so that we can send people to where there's not as much business. Just wanted to show, this is the South Marina in Saratoga, we've got Councilman Karn here. This has been an exciting endeavor, is getting Saratoga Springs residents tied into the lake. This has been a big expansion of their South Marina that's existed for quite some time. What are, what are we at? Three plus million on investment into that marina?
Yeah, I look like a five-year look back, about three million and, and we are out the bid right now, and I think another 2.1.
Okay.
On projects that are out the bid, went out the bid last week.
Oh, awesome. And so they have both the, the South Marina that's been there for a long time, and then this North Marina is the new marina that we stopped near the edge of. Very exciting, it's, we're getting a lot of progress on that, here's those aerial images that we were looking at. And right next to, I guess we have this here. It might be just, just too far, but just to the east of the marina is where that nature center site would be, so we'll, we'll see a little bit more about that. Just some nice images of renderings of what that North Marina is going to look like, I think that that will be a huge addition to the valley. And probably draw folks down from Salt Lake County as well, just being on the north end of the lake, giving people an opportunity to come down and enjoy that.
We're about, we're about 2.3 into that right now.
Okay.
And we've got, we have additional funding, about 2.5 we're working with.
In total, that's 30-ish million dollar project, right?
30 to 40.
And is that all Saratoga Springs funding?
Well, Saratoga Springs funding and grants and other agencies, yeah.
Some of the other projects that we're looking at were, as, as an authority, we're looking at improving access points all around the lake, there's 27 access points. And 17 of them at least could use some very substantial enhancements. So again, any kind of motorboat access or sportsman's access type programs that, that exist could be very helpful on expanding those. A, a number of that could be major projects, and we tackle kind of the bare minimum, making sure that the road is usable, that there's not a giant. Drop off on the edge of the pavement before getting in there, and that's the thing, but, but major potential on many of these access points to make them something really beautiful, so. Mary, did you want to talk about? So, so Vineyard City, a number of years ago, started planning their city center, and it flooded right up to the lake. And, and we partnered with the city and said, hey, let's do something really amazing here. No other city had, well, city centers, that's, that's the challenge, we have Saratoga Springs, who has an enormous amount of shoreline. But getting people to kind of a, a public engagement area right on the lakeshore is, is a challenge. And, and Vineyard had a proposal to bring their city center with a promenade from the UTA tracks, our front runner station, right out to the lakeshore. And so we've worked with them on looking for grants and getting some grants to do something really neat down there on the frontage of the city. And so this is kind of the, the current model of what that'll look like, if we see the city center up on the north end or the left. And then it kind of moves to, as you move down south, it becomes less and less dense as far as what it offers. And becomes natural as we hit that far right side as an open space park.
Yeah, well, and I'll just add to that, so a lot of the invasive species mitigation that's being done is through the, the marsh master and things like that. But then there's also a program that they're piloting cows, and in this area, we're looking at goats, where they're herding goats through the area to graze it. And then we've got some mitigation that we need to do with water quality on the north end of our city, that used to be the old Geneva site. So just looking at how that water quality has been affected over the years in the marina, so that's some of the things we're working on. And then just how do we build this economic center and then do conservation on the south side with farm equal or economic development and coordinating that with. Our transportation lines, because we've got a tracks line that runs down and then an opportunity for, I mean, the front runner that runs down and has a long promenade. I don't know, that goes right into the marina, it's like a 10-minute walk. And then on the northern side, an opportunity for connection from a potential tracks line that could go right into the marina as well. So just a really great connection from the city center.
So that looks like a wall, is it, or that, or it appears to be.
A pier.
Is a pier, okay.
And there's two piers in that image, I think.
Okay, yeah. It's kind of a, it kind of boxes in that big beach area.
Yeah, okay, yes.
How far is it from one point to?
I believe it's about three miles. And it's all public facing, so you can start in the very, you know, economic driven development area, a lot of tourism in that area that's shocking, eating, I think. And then you walk through and it becomes trails and more open space and very rich conservation where we meet into Provo with the migratory bird.
Another really cool project that is underway right now is working with, with Linden City. And this is just to the north of Vineyard, we drove past this on our tour. Right behind the existing marina is a strip of land that, that has really cool history with the Geneva Resort. And so Linden City has done some work on, on putting together a heart plan right behind the marina. That will both enhance the trail there, but also tie us in to the continuation of our lakeshore trail to the north and partnered with. Timpinoga Special Service District to get that plan underway, so they're just wrapping up permitting on that. And we should probably see, I can't recall what Timpinoga Special Service District's timeframe is, but here in the next year or so, start seeing work being done on this project, so. Anything you'd like to add, Mary?
Yeah, our focus here is the conservation education part, and this site is.
And this site is significant since pioneer times. This was the place along with Saratoga where. Pioneers and people would come and take the railroad and they'd get off in the Linden Railroad stop and then a buggy would take them out to this resort and it was huge. It had a hotel. Unfortunately burnt down, it had a huge dance hall, it had that giant slide. So this was before lagoon, this was like. So we're not quite able to put it back to that type of a of of entertainment vibe, but we want to have some, you know, some signage and things like that that. And and build a pavilion that will harken to the dance hall you see there have. Information. We already have a trail on the shoreline. We're really excited. This will just be. This will just symbiotically move with what Vineyard's doing and connect the trail hopefully all the way up to the American Fort. Uh Marina with what T S S D is doing to our north. And the other thing I'm really excited about is. We already have the trail in place here going north, south along the lakeshore. But we also have worked on for many years in Linden to do what's called the Linden Heritage Trail. From the mountain Murdoch Canal and the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. We have a heritage trail that comes all the way from the mountains of our city down here and it just needs to connect. You can kind of see the. The uh rail line there. Or uh front runners, but we just need like a one, one or two blocks left to be there. Oh, yeah. And so that's where I was talking with the congressman last time is. Union Pacific has been the hangout town for several years. They want a quarter of a million dollars just to do a permit application review. To give us an eight foot wide pedestrian or bicycle path to cross the spur. So that's, that trail's done except for just connecting to the shoreline.
And it's such an important access point because this marina is used so much by the residents.
One of the most towns.
Yeah, and to be able to have people come there from another place and to be able to access everything along the lake is so important. Um. Marilyn Berg and I have been coordinating on how we can get U P to work with us. And right now we're even combining our contracts so that they can see. It it is a really big regional issue, not just for roads, but for trails and then access to this huge amenity.
So what has, what has been the the holdup other than traditional bureaucracy? What has been the holdup? Is there a concern to have or just this?
No, it's just.
They just have your own kind of fee, huge fees and slow response and. Just make it tough. And for a municipality like us, I mean, we're investing about two to two point five million into this. Heart concept, but. When you have that exorbitant fee just to even submit an application to be reviewed. It's it's a barrier.
They do have three bills forward to say right now that they're doing really good and holding them accountable and moving forward. They're not going in until I think April. But um. If they don't move, then those could hold them accountable and help cities and lake communities all around.
Okay, keep us a little from that because I've heard, I've heard that the state is doing something like that. I want to know what the programs is here is, what what is that we can do to also find pressure? This is nationally, that's what they're doing. I don't know how to address it yet, but something has to be done with the way they did the process, whatever. So just keep us a loop.
Uh so another thing that we're working on south of Vineyard City on the left here is Walk Here Away. Uh this is a large open space park that ties between Vineyard and Orem and Provo. Uh it has, the, I guess, the federal nexus is right now, uh Bureau of Reclamation is working on the land swap to. To trade with or to provide land to the Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands. Uh and then that will allow for the trail to just be permitted through one entity. Uh and convert this into an open space park. So this, this will be grazed. Uh it will be grazed to a level that is, that is uh. Receives feedback from the Division of Wildlife so that we graze it just to the right level so that it can act as, as. Good bird nesting areas and other bird habitat. Uh along the shoreline there, it's it's a big, it's a mix of meadows and wetlands, just a gorgeous area.
Is this the the line that you, I'm seeing that was that area we talked about, the 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 purple?
So right here, so here.
Oh, okay.
These are the trails.
Okay.
And they, they have some spurs along right there.
Okay.
And then it comes into Orem right here. Then continues along the inland portion that ties it up into Provo City down on the south end. Uh everything else in there with with aside from fencing it so that they can be effectively grazed. Uh stays natural and it just becomes a a refuge for birds and. And there's an area towards the south that's got enough distance from houses that it can be. Continued to be used by hunters in the, you know, that season for uh waterfowl hunting. But just a gorgeous area that that has. Both a connection up top to the UTA front, front runner station in Vineyard and then a connection in Orem to the front runner connection. On the trail, so you have active, active transportation via trail. Through this project and gets gets people in this metropolitan area. Out into one of the more beautiful wilderness areas that is around.
That's cattle, cattle grazing.
Cattle grazes, yeah. Uh in the middle there, we've got uh just a couple examples of continued lakeshore trail. Uh right now, we've, we have maybe eighteen miles of a seventy-five mile to a hundred mile. Potential Utah Lake Shoreline Trail System. Uh our initial focus has been up on the north. Down from Saratoga Springs up north and then down to about Springville. Uh but we would love one day this, to complete this yellow line. And complete a trail all the way around the lake.
Nice.
That's about a hundred miles.
Around the lake, a hundred miles.
Yeah, the the lake shore itself proper at high watermark is seventy-five miles. And the trail itself would be, you know, clear of that. And especially down south, in order to stay clear of that, it adds quite a few more miles, so.
How far off the lake is the trail?
In some places, it's as close as right on the edge of the beach, because that can be the high watermark, because we have areas of the lake like Saratoga Springs. Where you have a pretty sharp decline.
Yeah.
You have Vineyard City that sits on a bit of a shelf. Uh but you have other areas like the north end of the lake where you you need to keep back quite a ways because it's a very shallow gradient. And likewise down on the south end of the lake, so those would be the areas where you, where you're probably a mile away from the lake instead of right on the shoreline.
Now, with the federal nexus, I'm trying to figure out, would that be the community uh? Was it community project, project funding? Would that, you guys tell me, would that be? Or that, or would that be something?
We need to take a look at the accounts for eligibility because we're only in our third year of earmarks back in the form of community project running requests. The accounts are changing quite a bit from time to time. I I can't say for sure from from this year's accounts, but that's something I can take a look at.
Okay. Awesome. Yeah, that I, from a usability standpoint, we know that we've got the Bonneville Shoreline Trail and the Murdoch Canal Trail in both. Get multiples more people using them than they ever expected would. Put a, put a trail on a lakeshore that's contiguous and. We're confident that it'll be one of the more well-used trails in the county. So getting that completed, providing that alternative. Uh route for transportation uh would be really kind of an amazing thing for residents here in the valley.
Uh Eric, the the northern, the the top picture, the top land of Saratoga.
Yes.
That arrow, that that's actually being done by UDOT, but that's a federal grant there.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know where that frankly came from. Because we're not, we have to be hands off because UDOT's doing it, but that's, that was a federal grant from somewhere.
That that was, yeah, the UDOT grant and then that's being supplemented through a Fortune Fire and State Plans Grant. Uh we, it it just ended up like all projects, you know, discovering that there was more to do than needed.
Well, contractor that they hired bankrupt and walked away.
Yeah.
Was start, start the process over, so. So those two sections we're doing will will. Complete the eleven and a half miles of shoreline that we have, we'll still have about. A mile and a half that needs to be improved.
Yeah, in the port, that photo right below the the map.
Yeah.
That's the area that needs to be improved, so that the plan was to just pave it and then when it was inspected by the the engineer.
Yeah.
We discovered that the wall wasn't, wasn't secure and then.
So that that will finish our eleven and a half miles.
Awesome. Uh, okay. The research program or the research center, this is, this is a a research and nature center. Uh we toured the site where that would go. Uh just a gorgeous area uh in the, in the corner of a a parcel owned by Fortune Fire and State Lands. Uh the center will have a dual purpose. It'll have a, a Utah County Fire Ward will be office. Uh on the side of that and have some garage space. Uh which frankly will add a cool element to fourth grade and K through twelve type field trips. If we can talk to the fire warden now and have him chat with, with kids. Uh that'll be a a neat thing that they can learn, not about, not only about the water system in the valley, uh which is what most of those field trips focus on. Uh but also how lack thereof and and water issues can impact uh fires in the area, so. And we're excited about that partnership. Uh local researchers, we've got U V U, who are very excited and wanting to partner with us on this research center. There, they have an a large number of professors who do research on Utah Lake. Uh but don't really have a place to stage or to collect or to evaluate their their samples. And this would be right next to that new Saratoga Springs North Marina. Uh and provide both a wet lab and a dry lab for that research to be conducted. And and we already know that USU up in Logan, uh our, our land. What is the land grant uh university? Uh is very interested also in coming down, sending researchers down to to do research as well, so they. There's essentially all of our universities are excited about the proposition of having something on the lakeshore. And so if there is education funding. Or. Uh water quality type nexus to that, to that facility. Uh we're, we're asking our, this upcoming legislative uh session to fund as much of that as they can. Uh but if there was a a partnership opportunity with federal, that would be amazing.
Well, I'm on the education for having education uh wonderful, so that would be something we definitely have conversation about.
Yeah.
I, I, I. Right, I, I can see connection there. I just have to get what that, what that'll look like and.
Even, even the, the bill that that you participated on, that it's for education that allows. Uh individuals and businesses to donate and get a uh tax credit.
Yeah.
Even tying that to a a Utah Lake type program through the, through a a nature center would be. An awesome win, you know, just giving people the the opportunity to donate and have a clear. Path for making that a tax benefit.
Okay.
Uh could be helpful, but but whatever comes to mind.
And Eric, that's tied to our marina and just so you know, you know, a year from now, we'll be about five million into funding on that.
Okay.
When you look at matching funds there.
I got one of these right next to me.
It's right next to it, yeah. And so they'll actually share parking, they'll have a lot of shared facilities, shared ramps for launching boats.
What's, what's the timeline for for this research center? Have you guys been able to project that out yet or still?
It could be a very quick uh process or project as soon as funding is there. So we. There's only been just a small amount of funding that was dedicated to doing site evaluation. And some initial feasibility study documentation. Uh but a lot of work historically has been, has already been completed. We've, we've. Done renderings and and so forth of what that could look like. We know, we know generally what the design will include, so. It's something that we could move on fairly quickly uh once that funding is there, probably within a year have. Have documents ready to start building.
The Hutchings Museum has sent us something. Are they partnering you, with you on this project in any?
They're not as an official partner on this. We, we do work with Hutchings Museum a lot and are looking for opportunities, for example, the.
We're partnering with them at our site. They're gonna have a greenhouse, because part of our park is gonna be a conservation park with native plants and water wise plants, little pathways. Fishing ponds. So they're gonna have a greenhouse that grows plants, public can come buy them or kids can learn about them, so.
I, I would envision. Using uh the Hutchings Museum and Institute staff to uh help with some of the educational stuff for.
They're the really cute like little citizen scientist program.
Yeah, so lots of opportunity and some partnerships for that. Okay, uh water safety, uh Utah Lake is a unique lake and with such a huge surface. Uh you get a windstorm and it can be a place that you don't want to uh be stuck out on the boat and so. Uh we installed uh the commission, Utah Lake Commission. Uh got some dollars together and put a a wind station on the north end of the lake at the American Fort Boat Harbor. Partnered with UDOT on the west side of the lake to install another one there. And then there's a few more wind stations that were already in existence and these helped to uh provide data for the windy lookout app. Uh windy lookout app essentially pulls all the data sources nearby and and even kind of in the periphery of that. Uh so that when a windstorm starts heading toward the lake. They, boaters can get about a thirty minute uh alert on their phone. And that's their signal to head for the marina. And with about a half hour, most boats are capable of getting on the lake in time. In addition to dealing with the wind. Uh the Lake Commission and now the Lake Authority has been working with volunteers. To develop a uh life jacket loner program. So at our major. Uh marina access points and a couple other access points. We install these uh stations with donated life jackets that we inspect in advance and and label them. And anyone that comes to the that access point that forgot their life jacket. Can just grab one off the stand, use it for the day and put it back at the end. And that program is phenomenal. Uh we've got some great volunteers that make sure that we've always got life jackets stocked at these. And uh it's really the response to a a couple of. Uh folks that came to the lake a few years ago and got out on the lake on on without life jackets with. With some inflatables and got blown out in a windstorm and and passed away just. Not being able to survive the winds and waves. And so this was a partnership with their families. Uh to get this established and it has gotten like and then keeps growing and and has been really exciting to see. Okay, so collaboration with partners. So the commission was in operation for sixteen years. It it was able to do some really amazing things and the purpose of it was to unify communities around the lake to to. Bring up projects and and roll out things that would, would have an impact on the entire lake. No one city was. You know, in a position to change the whole lake. And so it was created for that purpose. And now it continues in that same fashion with with federal, state, local collaboration. Uh and has been very successful in this new version, the Utah Lake Authority is better funded and more able to do more than ever. Um with these partnerships and so it's been uh really excited.
Where's the funding, how's funding?
So historically, it was through all the partners. So there were twenty-one board members. And each of those, whether that be municipalities or the county or state agencies, each contributed a certain amount. Uh and now uh the Utah Lake Authority is fully funded through the state.
At a minimal level.
Yeah, it's one point five million. So, which, which was a big, you know, a big increase on our ability to do projects on the lake, but. But it's. It's hard to describe just how much. It takes to make even an incremental change on the lake the size of Utah Lake.
Yeah.
You know, a hundred and fifty square miles, you want to change the water quality just this little bit. That's a, that's a huge undertaking. So the more funding that we have for water quality enhancements and access improvements. Uh we can do some amazing things. We're good at doing a lot with little.
Yeah.
Uh and so the more we could, we could have to to roll out some of those projects would be very, very beneficial.
Yeah, Director Matthews took on a project for competitive grants for water quality along the lake. I don't know if you're gonna be talking about that later.
Our, yeah, I'll bring it in. Or if you wanted, so this was a fine.
Yeah, to go.
So there's been a number of 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 funding programs that have supported the lake, but. Uh Mayor Former speaking of some ARPA funding, thirty million dollars on the case. Uh the Utah Lake, I think watershed is probably the term. So it's fairly far reaching up into the watershed in addition to communities around the lake. Uh bulk of that money, I'm gonna have to guess, uh about twenty-six went into capital infrastructure, mostly wastewater facility facilities. The balance going into a wide variety of things, non-point source agriculture. Even some innovative uh and agriculture type projects, some things like. Even some innovative uh and agriculture type projects, some things like virtual virtual fencing, not as well as some education projects. It was a good start.
And then we got, I think it was five million from the state, but it was, it went to buying some wetland area of land bank. And then the rest is being divided up into communities that are seeking help for access points around the lake, but. As you can see, there's so much going around the lake that that amount of money is not going to be a lot to help people. You know, mitigate or get rid of the the things that they need to in order to really make it be accessible for the public, so. Anything that we can do to get additional funding or find ways to um find additional funding resources, we that is our focus. So that we can complete our management plan.
Uh so yeah, so the first goal of the Lake Authority was to put together this management plan. Uh that management plan has now been uh completed, at least in conceptual stage, and the final plan is is just about to be rolled out here in the fall. Um but it's really given us a long list of projects that need to be done and. Most certainly, we we don't have enough funding to do all of those soon, so as Mayor Fulmer pointed out. Uh the more programs that we can kind of tap into for the various elements that we've been discussing. The more we could accomplish and kind of have measurable results in the near future. Uh I guess lastly, we just talked about our public outreach, because one of the problems with Utah Lake historically has been perception. Uh a lot of people live near the lake and for a period of time, it had some severe water quality issues. Uh those have improved greatly, but even to this day, as as I pointed out in those those initial algae uh comments. The lake is is experiencing blooms and we really need to uh improve the perception of the lake and and the the reality of it as well, but. To do that.
I understand, I am guilty of that perception and so it went with the mayor's, and I think we just had a rain after that, before that, and it was just. I had no idea that we we had such a treasure so close and and I mean, see the the good one we had shows potential, we just could. Get that water uh issue taken care of, so.
Absolutely, so we do a variety of of uh perception efforts, fourth grade field trips. Annual photo contest that brings in some of the most beautiful photography you've ever seen, we. Um let's make a note, we 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 need to get a photo printed for your office. Uh we provide uh our board, once a year, we we provide them with a winning contest.
Yeah.
But it but really, I mean, it's just a treasure that is just not being quite fully utilized, and so. As we do these projects and 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 efforts, uh it really does change perceptions. Uh we do a scavenger hunt where people go around and have to figure out all of these cool things about the lake and. Invariably, they come back and say, no idea that the lake had so much to offer, and so there we're winning little by little. Uh we do fishing with care event to, you know, bring public awareness about safety on the lake. Uh and then shoreline cleanups, we we do some big cleanups a couple times a year, nine eleven is a big day of service. Uh but we have an adopted shoreline program with forty. Forty, forty one?
Adaptable.
Forty five, forty five adoptable, and forty of those are or have been adopted by community partners and such. Uh but really doing a good job of of kind of improving that perception. Uh our new our new logo for the Lake Authority is has been completed, it's probably not a major connection, but it was a big hurdle for us. Uh and then work and and just working with a an ad firm to come up with some ideas for improving the perception was. A really helpful exercise, and we've got some great ideas, and we'll start rolling some of those out here soon. Uh just wanted to talk about some of the partners, Hutchings Museum is one of those great partners that we have, the Utah Valley, Explore Utah Valley. Uh right here with Curtis has been a phenomenal partner, the June Sucker Program. Uh many partners that have been helpful at at developing what we do on Utah Lake. This will work.
Yeah, it will work.
This is, this is a campaign that we can hold off, oh, Utah Lake is my camp, is my lake.
Utah Lake is my lake because. The incredible memories that I made with my family and my friends on here.
Utah Lake is my lake because Utah Lake is never the same. Twice, I look forward to coming out and having something new. Uh I always learn something every time I go out sailing, and there's a new facet to Utah Lake every time I go out.
Well, Utah Lake is my lake because it is my lake. And I can fish anyplace I want, I'm retired, I can go anyplace I want, it's it's everything I want in fishing experience.
It's the entire package, it's the whole. You've got everything you you could possibly desire. Why do I consider Utah Lake my lake? Because of the fond memories that it brought me with my family and friends.
Utah Lake is my lake because I love wildlife and I love photography. You've got to come down here, it it's it's heaven.
So yeah, that was a an impactful um program or campaign that we put together and and in the summertime, we we. Released little clips of those uh individuals that that we interviewed. Um but little by little, again, it's it is very difficult to change a a full generation of a perception on. Of a water body that all you should go down there, it's stinkier, it's murkier, it's dirty. Um but it's it's working just little bits at a time. And I think we'll just wrap up with that, uh so. Maybe we could just discuss. Uh ways that 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 your connection uh could. Or your interest in the lake could could help. Further our efforts.
If we want Director Mackey to.
Oh, yeah.
Say a few things before we jump into.
Yes, so Director Mackey is gonna talk a little bit about the implementation framework for the water quality studies, so let's talk about that before. We switch over to the round here.
And as well, I had a nice, put on a seven case. Not be able to make out the slides if this is. See how it goes. Thank you for um joining us here at Utah Lake Authority, it's great to have you back to Utah Lake. Have a chance to talk with you about the study that we've been working on for for quite a while. Uh John Mackey is my name, I'm the director of the Division of Water Quality. Um our job is to implement both Clean Water Act and the Utah Water Quality Act to state. That makes us regulators in a lot of ways. Uh we um administer a lot of permits, um we also administer funding programs, the state of all. Uh is our, I call it our white hat. Program where we incentivize uh water quality. Programs, uh implementation of infrastructure improvements to water quality, and we've been working on. Utah Lake for quite a while. Let's see, where am I? See, my eyes to focus on this, so just a little bit of history and for everybody else, and I I know a lot of folks have. Heard this story before, but just to kind of back them a little bit at time, that let you know how we got here. Uh in twenty eleven, Nancy Stoner, who was an assistant. Administrator, EPA Office of Water issued what came to be known as the Stoner. And um what it was, was a call to action nationwide for states to begin to look at and begin to address. Um nutrient pollution and problems associated with nutrients. Um there have been um two additional generations since Nancy Stoner issued her call to action. Um the latest being Radika Fox uh issued her uh equivalent call to action just last year, I think. Encouraging states to make more progress, that PPA does not provide us with standards. Provide us with a um uh one trick pony, here's what you have to do to implement nutrients standards, they can recognize. Uh with a lot of input from states that it's different, it's different in states, and the way we can. Uh improve our water qualities in the case of nutrients is going to be different, and so we do have a lot of flexibility um through the law. Um following um that Nancy Stoner's first call to arms. Um the state decided that we were gonna work on an adaptive management plan, I know that that term is not always loved by some folks. Uh but nonetheless, what it means is that we're gonna take steps towards progress, we're not gonna. Try to have, um you know, a heavy fist that may miss the target. Uh in terms of being able to protect waters, we're gonna take smart, logical steps, and I'll talk a little bit more about what we've implemented so far. Um let's see. Trying to make out my bullets there, um. Oh, so in twenty sixteen, um uh Utah Lake was uh was classified by the division as being impaired. Impaired, so not meeting its beneficial uses, designated beneficiaries for recreation, and that was because of. Nutrients and really because of harmful algae um that are associated directly um with excess nutrients. And and then since that time, um we and the commission and the authority and many other partners. Have been working on the Utah Lake Water Quality Study, you see that acronym, you you ULWQS. Around, we've been working on this for for quite a number of years to to try and do the steps that need to be done. To define the problem, find the 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 nutrient problem, the magnitude and extent of that problem, sources of. These contaminants and work towards solutions. Um so the goal of the study is to improve and protect water quality. Uh of Utah Lake, um and we have a, I think the next slider. On coming up, we'll talk to you a little about the organization that we put together with quite a number of partners. This is expected, was expected to be a very heavy lift to be able to implement a nutrient standard here in Utah Lake. Because it's expensive and it's hard and it's. There's not an easy fix, there's no silver bullet here, so um we formed an organization. Yeah, so we formed an organization to oversee this process, we're scientists in the vision, we're good at doing science. Um but not everybody believes us, and we don't always get it right, science is not something that always comes easily. Uh and so uh working with the commission then, uh we formed a steering committee. Uh a committee of policymakers who who are there to ask the important question, what is it we're trying to do with this study? Uh and then they work um with stakeholders as well as a science panel that we sat, experts from around countries. People who are experts in, you know, um lake systems and nutrient management and so forth. And so we have this organization, there's a lot of checks and balances, so that when we get to the end, and we're still not to the end, but we're getting pretty close. Um science is not always clear and straightforward. Um it it can be difficult, uh you know, you're asking questions that may not have always been asked or always had the easy answers, but nonetheless. We have this organization that reports through the authority ultimately to the Water Quality Board and to the legislature, because. If the impacts of the water quality requirements, that's from our perspective, that's chemistry, biology of what's going to be. Impacts are expected to be large in cost, then there's a legislative step, in addition to going through the usual processes of getting the. Yeah, for the Water Quality Board approval, there's a legislative step as well, so before we get there. Uh we want to make sure that all our stakeholders are enthusiastic about the approaches that are being proposed to Utah Lake. So here's some sort of major steps, and I'll I'll walk through these um in a little bit more detail in the following slides. Uh what is the strategy? Well, so basic science describes a problem, define the problem, where do nutrients come from? Um identify some of the things that can be done to improve them, good example. Can you ask wastewater treatment plants to remove more nutrients? Well, we've already done that. Um and then uh adapt, um have adaptive strategies. Again, we don't think that there's an easy way to bring a big heavy hammer down that says, do this and it'll solve the problem. There's a lot of of community needs and agency coordination and stakeholders' interests that need to be addressed to make sure that. Um that what we implement will get us where we want to get, get us there quickly, and then we can pay for it. Uh and then ultimately, you know, continuous process of checks and balances on steps that are taken, things that are implemented. Uh we mentioned CARP a little bit earlier, um you know, we have a pretty good idea of. Uh what happens when we when we remove CARP, uh but it seems to be an ongoing, I think I'm gonna say. Um was it a million of the ARPA money, maybe it was a million dollars for two years of removal. But that's not ongoing funding, um and you know, we get stagnant, so but we need to know, we need to know that this is a successful, fruitful path. To to make the strides that we need to 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 ultimately improving the lake's water quality and and it's and it's uses. So um sources, uh of course, nutrients come from many, many places. They actually come from the sky, they come from dust, they come from what we call nonpoint source pollution. They can be septic tanks that can run off land here from agriculture, as well as from our cities through our stormwater and through our sewers. So uh we've put together a. Oh, that's already done.
Oh, is that you?
Go ahead now. Okay, let's try this. Oh, there's a second, so part of our study, we put together a a a map of the water there, because there's different activities that contribute nutrients in different ways throughout the state. Uh and so where is the, where's the low hanging fruit, this is kind of the idea of adaptive management. Find the big bang for the box to address nutrients and. Don't push any further until we've had a chance to mon- monitor, verify and correct and adjust before we take additional steps. So we have this fantastic model now that allows to look at areas, you know, on an area by area on a. Source by source, whether it's agriculture, industrial, nonpoint source or um stormwater, um and we can actually. Play with this toy to evaluate what if we do certain improvements in certain areas or in certain industries. And along those same lines, I mean, there are these different uses and and we know that the strategies that need to be adopted, that should be adopted. Will be varied, a lot of its education. Uh it's it's so important that people understand what their activities are doing, contributing to pollution, nutrient pollution and impacts on the lake. So this slide has just sort of a wide variety of of different things that go on, different things that we can do. Um at home and in our neighborhoods to help the lake in addition to some of the bigger, maybe maybe. Uh heavy duty infrastructure uh approaches. Um so um we know that um that Utah County in particular is gonna grow. Um some estimates, right, um by sixty, I think it's twenty sixty. Um and so that needs to be taken into account. We are already removing more and more nutrients with the treatment plants, the seven treatment plants that are around the lake, already doing a better job. Uh but as the community is growing, we're just sort of barely keeping up because there's more waste being produced, more nutrients being produced in the watershed. Um so it's hard to keep up. Uh but that's part of what needs to be recognized in developing strategies. Um to to improve the situation is recognizing we're going to grow, land uses are going to change, and the way we address. These pollution problems going forward is going to have to be adaptive. So and just a little animation of of future conditions. So I talked about adaptive nutrient strategy, I just want to touch base on this, because this is, this is part of our adaptive nutrient strategy, I mentioned low hanging fruit. Uh what can you do? So these are things that we've already done, we've implemented headwater criteria. Headwaters, of course, are upper mountain. Headwaters, of course, are upper mountainous and we have nutrient standards in headwaters. Um, it's kind of low hanging fruit because there aren't polluters up there. There aren't discharges, not very many. Who need to be regulated. Uh, but nonetheless, these are, these are our drinking waters. These are waters that we really want to protect and we worked. Across the board, um, with, with industry and agriculture to make sure that these were. Uh, standards that we can live with and that we can address. Through our non, sorry, non, non-point source approaches to keep those waters clean. Or they reach us down here. Technology based, that's what I'm saying. This is the one, um, regulation that really impacted people, that cost people money. Um, what the state decided in working with cities and districts, uh, was that we would have a phosphorus only. Phosphorus is one of the two key nutrients, right? Phosphorus and nitrogen. Uh, a modest one milligram per liter. So coming out of a city, it ranges from two to six. Uh, and so we put a limit on treatment plants across the state. At one, we did economic evaluations, all sorts of things to, uh, demonstrate them. Uh, to users and to the governor and to the legislature, that this was, this was a smart first move and it went through. Um, twenty fifteen, this, this law was passed. Um, due to be effective in twenty twenty unless you had major improvements that you needed to do. Many treatment plants decided that at the same time, they were making, um, fairly minor changes or modest changes. That they were going to recognize the growth that was on the previous slide. And, and plan for that growth as well. And so their, their, um. Upgrades of their facilities became more complicated. So, um, that put them into a category that got them an extra five years towards construction. So twenty twenty five. Um, all of the wastewater treatment plants, the seven around Utah Lake as well as the rest of the state that we got free. For this one phosphorus. Um, one of the things that, um, um, is really interesting. Um, that came out of this was, um, removing phosphorus to one is a pretty straightforward thing. If we want to do it on the cheap, you can. Um, but most of the fil- facilities took, took a bigger step to address the future needs and. So doing brought in newer technology. So they all, almost all advanced technology. Um, which to me is really exciting. It makes the plants much more minimal and much better able to respond to future requirements as well. Um, and then the last thing I'll mention is, is just, it's called the AGVIP program, Agriculture Voluntary Incentive Program. We don't regulate. Agriculture, the Division of Water Quality, but we do try to incentivize them through our non-point source program. We don't have very much. Um, but nonetheless, uh, we try to use the money that we have very wisely and what this pro- program does. Is it supports, um, producers. Who will implement nutrient management practices on their farms, uh, through a subsidy, a three-year subsidy. Um, um, uh, and then to, to implement these practices, they also get some regulatory certainty. Um, um, in the event there's a problem, um, usually the acts of God. Plugs and things like that, plugs and storms that might cause them to send more nutrients down to a stream. Uh, to date, a hundred thousand acres, um, are under the AGVIP program. Um, and the, the producers are excited about this program. Of course, for three years, they get a subsidy. But also, this program, we believe, helps them soil, soil health as well as protecting water quality. And this benefits, these hundred thousand acres are throughout the state, but it definitely benefits Utah Lake. In terms of reductions in nutrients coming from agriculture in the watershed. Um, that program, um, was done in, um. In concert with, uh, Department of Agriculture. Um, we built it, we partnered with them because they really have the relationships with producers that we don't have. We're still regulators, not next up. Um, but, um, hundred thousand acres in the program, we have now turned the whole program over to the Department of Agriculture. Transitioned over to them. And frankly, they've had a lot more success of being able to fund that program through the legislature than we ever could have. Um, so it's a really good program, um, that is successful and we think it will be done. Able to expand. Um, so, uh, where, where are we going? Uh, our studies have showed us a number of things. Am I doing okay on time? And I'm, I'm pretty close to rap, yeah. Um, so we've done quite a number of, of studies in this program. Things like, um, doing, uh, paleo studies on the sediment, having a new color. And what does it show us? It shows us that things have gotten worse, that the biology in the lake has changed from a macrophyte based. Um, ec- ecosystem to a algae based ecosystem. We've done, um, microcosms with algae and we found that. Nutrients can make things worse, but we can also make things better. So we have good news from, from those studies. Um, we've. Almost completed, um, some mass balance studies that are really important. They look at internal cycling of nutrients. They're coming in and out of the sediment, um, that are a big concern for us. Even if we can shut it off at wastewater treatment plants or stormwater. Is it still going to cycle through? Um, very promising findings in those that we think. That the recovery time under improved nutrient regimes, uh, will be fairly, fairly rapid. I mean, the numbers, maybe they're a little optimistic, but one to three years are the numbers that are, are in discussion. So that's fantastic. It's going to take a lot longer to, to change the treatment. Um, to, and, and the other inputs, uh, than it is to recover the lake once we can have those changes. Um, this is, um, this is, um. Uh, an image that I, I don't know if we got permission from you for this, but I would agree with you, but. I hope you don't mind that we used your image. Permission, Gary. Thank you. Um, so in addition to all this chemistry that we work on, that is really our job. Um, we've had, been working with really fantastic groups of scientists, um, both partners and a science. Who, who have identified a lot of things that Eric has really already addressed. Nutrients alone are necessary. You've got to do something about nutrients in Utah Lake, but you're not going to get to where. The Utah Lake Authority's mission says they want to be with a clean, clear lake. Have to, you have to control the CARP, CARP because they stir up the sediments. Um, that's, there's a nutrients that have taken, and prevents light from penetrating, reestablishing. The, um, the submerged, uh, vegetation, excuse me, that will anchor the sediments into the soil. Um, but the CARP tear that up, so there are these multi-things, that multiple things that have to accomplish. Um, you know, in concert, to be really get, you know, and I think in a fairly short time to where we cope this way. That's. Um, so effective management strategies, um, you know, there are a number of things that, that need to be done. Uh, you know, reducing loads at point sources, wastewater. Stormwater management, stormwater is, boy, there's a real challenge for us. It's just so much more difficult to manage stormwater be- because of the way it comes in. We, and we build wastewater treatment plants that collect wastewater from a whole city through systems and sewers and they come down here. And you can treat it in one place, but that's not how we do water. Stormwater gets put out into every tributary as close as you can get in general. Um, and, and, and frankly, it, it's, it's hard to understand. Sometimes you look at stormwater and, and it looks pretty clean. Sometimes you look at it and it's just boiling. Uh, and it may be from the same pipe a day later. Very challenging. Non-point source problems, non-point source, um, as, as well as, you know, restoration of the habitat. Uh, all major steps that will have tremendous benefits. Um, to all of these benefits that, that, that are, are dear to us, the, the quiet life. The recreation, recreational uses, other uses of the wire for irrigation. Eric always talked about, I'm ready to talk about implementation planning. Really, um, working with Utah Lake Authority, the, the commission and the authority is so important. This organization represents all the cities, um, all the interests, uh, and the public who attends our meetings. Very engaged and it's so important for this organization to stay strong. Uh, you know. Have what you need in an organization here to be able to make improvements to all the things that need to be done. Studies, planning, design, implementation, instructions. So they're all here. Um, it's a good time right now. There's a lot of interest and we don't want to lose momentum. Uh, as we start to lose members for various different reasons, whether it's turnover, political turnover, uh, it's, it's easy. To, to lose that member. So really an important time to be taking action.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, I was just going to say if there are other questions that you guys have, or if you guys want to make any comments about. Um, what you're working on or what's going, what's going on right now, or what you hope to see in the future, or anything that you want. Uh, Congressman Owens to be aware of.
Well, John, thank you for that. I'm curious to go back to your question for Congressman. Now, what, what do we see as synergies and what can we support Congressman and his efforts? I mean, he sits on very influential committees. If we can leverage that, what ways can we lift each other in our roles?
Any thoughts for us? Maybe to point that question, how do we best partner?
Well, I'll tell you, and, and, um. That's really what I'm, I'm first of all glad we have a team we have now. Uh, Devin is our legislature director and so in terms of taking the information you guys have. Ideas and turn it into legislation, yes, he's going to be that, I'm very proud of what Kate is doing, uh, with her expertise and background. So, so I guess you chief to it, um. I think we also, we shared it's the same vision. Uh, and, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to really finally see it. Eleven year, for ten years, I had no idea what was, was my backyard. So, um, it's just really down there. Letting us know as we collaborate, we talk, you know, work with the state, where do we fit in? What, what, what areas do you see? Maybe we can give a partner in what you're doing, uh, where would our community, um. Uh, just maybe fit in. And that's what we have to figure out also. We're, we're all looking at these. Uh, wherever it is, the, the fact that I'm on the Education Infrastructure Committee, uh, I'm extremely excited about that. Uh, I'm excited about the relationship developed with the chairman. Uh, my, my thought is, is, uh. If we can kind of come together with a real plan of the vision we see for Utah. But the, the point I made coming aboard was that we, there's no state as more as, as, as we are. That budgets ourselves the way we do, that thinks outside the box and collaborates what we do. So we can do that and be an example. For what the rest of the country can do with the similar issues. And I think that might be where we can maybe do that, that, that model, a project model that, that I hope. Transition.
I think what, what's really great about this is that each of our entities have something that you serve on. And you're doing something with right now. I think we're all really invested in water infrastructure investment. And how we can make that work in our communities. And I think maybe something that would be beneficial to all of us. Is saying what we're working on and sending that in, whether it's to Eric or directly to your team. Saying, here's what we're doing and this, I have a good partner. I know just the infrastructure that you sit on as far as transportation. And how that's accessible to the lake. I know we could use letters of support or there's also this program that Director Matthew was talking about. How to direct funds towards that with the reclamation plans and looking around the lake because those reclamation plants not only affect. The nutrients going into the lake, but it changes the way places like Spanish Fork function. And allows that land to change so that we can get infrastructure moving into like road infrastructure, moving into our South County. And when you're looking at the airport and you're thinking, okay, if we can get infrastructure in the right places and get rid of pragmities in certain areas. You can get rid of migratory birds in the places we don't want them, like around the airport and where do, and where we actually want them. Like in those native preserve, preservation areas, Walcar Way or up by where we're talking about or near TFSB's open space. So I think all of us could probably come together and say, here's a list and this is what we.
That would be so helpful because you have this collaborative effort here. And, and this thing just mentioned, keep in mind, uh. When we get into, um, we can, we can talk about the college, the, the, the environment. Uh, where to be the mosquitoes or the, the, and, and, uh, the, the structure. Those are things that if we can kind of focus on that and, and make that part of our story, then we can really, uh, I think have, uh, have an effect. I like to back that, 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 that the, um, the, the concerns about, uh, the nutrients and how it could be. With that, imagine us having, having an opportunity to figure that out here and then think it would take that and then have other, other communities benefiting from it. So. It's kind of what I'm seeing.
Sir, if I may, uh, pose a question to the group, has, has anybody here worked with either Congressman Curtis's office or our office with the community project running requests? The last three years, you have, okay, do you remember which account or that was for, which, which request was just?
In fact, I don't think it's even finalized yet. So we work with both, both offices.
It was for this cycle?
It was, it was for, it go through the FAA and the.
Yeah, so, so the, these, I, I, I apologize for being redundant here, but I, I really want. Every city, every county, every entity to have the ability to be able to compete to these funding streams. Um, this year, surprised, it's a little bit. We, each office is permitted to submit fifteen requests to the appropriations committee. We work with you guys, we work with our state stakeholders and leaders and making those. Um, requests in the, in the best position possible to succeed. And then it's up to the appropriations committee, um, to recognize the value of our requests. Uh, this year, actually eleven of our fifteen requests were water related. And they range from everything to new water towers, to sewers, um, to water reclamation efforts. So I definitely think there are some accounts that might be low hanging fruit. And, um, that, that, that is up to, to me and your city managers or, or whoever works in your. Um, respective organizations with us on community project running requests. Um, I. Foolishly forgot my business cards, but I'd love to get you guys my information. Just so we can get started sooner rather than later and trying to identify which accounts you guys might be eligible for. They do shift from year to year, uh, but be pretty similar this upcoming year. Because, uh, Republicans will still have the maturity for, for this upcoming year. Um, but my, my email is, uh, D E V O N, that's Devon. Dot Murphy, M U R P H Y, at mail dot house dot gov. And I will be working community project running requests this year in addition to our deputy district director, Alex Johnson, who has some experience of those as well. Um, these, these requests, they, they can be a little bit labor intensive. But it really is the fastest, most efficient way for federal dollars to make an immediate impact in, in, in our communities. Um, so let's continue to identify some accounts that folks might be eligible for and then giving them the best chance possible to succeed.
I'm just adding that there's a small window, once it opens up. Uh, to have things in place and then to get results of that. So I was just, yes, now for the time, if you have not dealt with this in this regard. This, which you have to get it real quickly to understand what that looks like. Uh, I think I was that, has, has to kind of put together a form that helps to kind of cut the chase in some ways.
Yeah, yeah, we have one page in a form, um, but just like you said, boss, right now we can help to inform you about the process and then in January. Um, that, that's when things will really kick off in earnest. And then the last thing I just wanted to say as well, sir, um. Please bother us with, with grant letter requests. The delegate, the benefits of having a very small and ideologically homogeneous congressional delegation is that we, we work really well together. And we will always, al- almost always join one another's green to request letters. Um, the whole delegation just joined one for UTA one, uh, last week. So please bother us. We, we'd be more than happy to provide some grant letter support and get the whole delegation on board as well.
What we have, uh, as an advantage is we have one lake and all this collaboration. So that's powerful. Uh, when they can see that there's, there's all these entities and the benefits to everyone, there's growth, tourists. We bring a revenue in, quality of life, uh, pushing our, our construction down further south. All those things are, are part of what you guys are doing. So. Now is the best time to really, yeah, continue, continue co- collaboration, to understand how, how this, these plots work out for a certain way.
So with that said, it would be better for the ULA. It would be better for the ULA as a governing body to make requests to there because it represents a broader. Organization or would be better for individual cities to try and reach out to those?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the most political answer ever. It it really depends on the nature of the quest. It depends on the account. You'd have to evaluate on a case by case basis. It's dependent on the request in the account. It might be better for the ULA or for the individual city to make that application. Sorry, I know that answer sucks.
Yeah, okay.
Do we reach out to you directly to figure out what which accounts there are? Because it's, yeah, it's. Yes, to you, you you've got some phenomenal experience in DC. And it's hard, you know. Looking to that system to figure out what is available. So we just reach out and say, okay. You know, kind of generally what our what our project ideals are. What accounts should we be considering? And and then we can do the research and figure out what absent amounts are.
That that's exactly how we've done it over these last three years since they come back.
Great.
The good thing is we're two years now into it. Uh, you mentioned that eleven were water related. I think we got fifteen requests, fourteen were were looking through. So.
For a total of twenty-two million dollars bought to the district.
Yeah. So and that what I love about this this new way of going at it. Uh, we have a chance as well as as representatives to know exactly the issues are, not either to Senate or President to control things that are so. Um, and what we're doing right now, it's um, I think it'd be beneficial now with us for a lot of other other parts of the country like this. So. So let's uh, yeah, let's make sure we're bringing you guys up on this.
How good is Utah doing? You know, there's limited finite funds. I mean, sometimes it feels like there's not such spending so much. Um. How is Utah doing overall and, you know, getting some of these appropriations or? Could we do better? Are we kind of holding our own across the board compared to other states?
Uh, I'm not sure about that answer. Uh, I I. Make 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 sure you're correct on this now. I know the is a one percent. The waste of is one percent of discretionary that is dealt with that. That this fund deals with. Uh, so it's not adding to the budget. Am I am I correct on this?
Yeah, you're you're exactly correct. Um, so when when community project running request first came back. Um, under Democrats, uh, they they were capped at that one percent of discretionary spending. Then Republicans came in. Um, we wanted to be a little bit more fiscally contributive. Now they're capped at only half a percent of federal spending. Um, that this is money that federal agencies are going to spend anyways, and instead of delegating that authority to them to spend it as they see fit. We are taking back a little bit of that authority and directing where those things need to go. Um, it would be very, very helpful. To always try to encourage our lovely senators to participate in the community project funding request process. Uh, all four House offices participate, but unfortunately, our Senate colleagues do not. It'd be immensely helpful to have their support in the Senate as well. Um, we as a House delegation, you've been absolutely killing it. Just just like Congressman Owen said, fourteen out of fifteen of our requests were accepted. I know in the more team thirteen out of fifteen of those requests were accepted and we work really well together, right? Um, I know that Provo Airport had a request last cycle that you guys came to us. When you guys were in Congressman Curtis's district, so we spread the love and handed over to them and they ended up submitting it. To ensure that um, it would have the best chance possible. So we're we're doing really, really, really well. Um, it's just honestly getting the word out to folks like yourselves because a lot of folks don't even know that there are opportunities to get this federal dollar students process.
So question fifteen total or fifteen in each account?
Uh, fifteen total per congressional office.
And it has to be uh. Real deal. Uh, I think things is truly impactful. Um. Uh, I mean, that's the first, the first term of Democrats in charge does some really crazy stuff out there. Uh, social justice stuff. So we're we're not doing that kind of thing. Things we're looking at that we're talking right now is really what we've been trying to sort of. Get get our hands on. So just just keep what you're doing. And we just have an issue with kind of, you know, put it up, put it in a good light and and present it again.
That's great. Are there any other questions that you guys have for us that we could answer? Just any knowledge about the lake? What we're doing? Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
No, ask lots of questions.
Is is there any tie into the Great Salt Lake recovery efforts? Ha- has that tied into Utah Lake? Because I know they are all connected.
From a, from a funding standpoint, we we are not connected to. Uh, the Great Salt Lake. From a watershed standpoint, there is an absolute nexus. Uh, both on. The evaporation issues that you saw Utah Lake faces. Uh, you know, we if we could address something like that, that is a instant win for the Great Salt Lake. Any water quality efforts that we deploy here on the you on Utah Lake have a fairly big impact on the Great Salt Lake. So. Yes, absolute connection, but just not currently with fun.
Right. So kind of to give that from a waterway perspective, uh, we mentioned fragment earlier and the. High water usage or drainage to the fragment cause. So if we eliminate fragmity and have a project that would increase that throughout the lake. That is more water that stays in the lake that eventually forced through tributary, generated over to Great Salt. So there's a very literal, direct connection to Great Salt Lake water preservation. Um, so if there are other projects that we brainstorm that those might be applicable in in connecting, I think to your point at the very beginning. Uh, from this. That if we can tie water. In a statewide or or even a national perspective, waterways, flight paths, forwards, preserving those water um, rights that we're doing now. So there's a lot of. Um, watershed or national preservation area that we're trying to set aside. We can tie those to some of the migratory patterns across the Great Salt Lake and. Um, you know, that might be a connection and nexus for a project to here to be connected to the national. So I mean, as we think about that as a group, I think those are some directions that we. Could put either into one of these smaller community projects or a larger.
Small comment.
Okay.
I'm really um, excited to hear you're on the education committee too. Um, and at UBU, we really use Utah Lake as like a lab, like. We have so many professors, so many classes engaged directly on research on the lake. Um, and at UBU, we also like to say that our students really are Utah's workforce. We know that like eighty percent stay in Utah. In fact, I'm pretty sure you are in one of my class.
I took your class.
I knew it.
And I and I and I did the research. Yes.
Geography.
And I made sure.
Yeah, I mean, Kate, I was like, I swear. So like, you really have an impact and I just love the energy around in Utah Lake and UBU and the research station. It's just really exciting time. It's a really exciting time to care about the lake. Because there is this momentum like kind of Director Mackey talked about. There's just a lot of intention, a lot of momentum, exciting stuff happening and. Our cities all around the lake. It's a really good time, I think.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm I'm uh, because of of I grew up in that at Media World, the institute is really to me so exciting. I mean, I just. I just can't imagine outside of kids would be to come out and and see them drive the the wetlands and the lake. Uh, do research and 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 in the uh, Snow College or all the colleges around it, we actually been tired to uh, take advantage of what we're doing here. So. Uh, yeah, the education workforce, we're a big piece of what we're trying to figure out what we can support and funding and you can.
Yeah, we're excited to be a part of that over weekend.
I don't know about Tony, my dad was uh, uh, got his teaching and 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 abroad, the education and agriculture. And he did research, that was his deal. Um, so I'll go to the lab and and clean vows and all of that. So I can just imagine how cool it's going to be to see sitting on a lake to to do this stuff. So.
Any other comment?
I think Hillary and I are, we're not elected officials. We're kind of. Focus out on this board, but but because you represent such a strong community of students and staff and faculty and research. And of course, the Chamber of Commerce who represent the businesses and the communities that want to build restaurants and paddleboard stations. And so, you know, it's. We're we're grateful to serve on this board, but 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 what what's motivating is this idea that we can make this like a destination like here. A place where we can conserve the heritage and the, you know, the 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 values as well as the conservation efforts. And still build up a commerce community around that that supports this ecosystem. So. Really excited to come to this and have you in the know and 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 helping. Us navigate some of the tricky waters that are ahead. There's funding that's that's obviously one of the obstacles, but. What we hope is not an obstacle is the 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 fact that we can make that like a place. Uh, the the this, the character and quality of this county, right, a destination like. So we can continue to be, you know, one of the best places to live. To work, to learn and play. So thank you for all you do for this.
Well, if you guys have any more questions in respect of your time, you know, that you guys will on your next meeting. Yeah, thank you.
This last comment, thanks guys for what you're doing. Uh, this is a fun process for me to see this innovation and see this collaboration is. And and just to manage what what this could be like next fifteen, twenty years, we just blow apart. A destination is what it should be. It's probably the destination by kind of state. So thanks for um. Or and and uh, again, including this process and for being as helpful as I can.
Yeah, and we're so excited to be working together and I'm sure we'll all be reaching out really soon. So you're going to be inundated. Thank you for your time. I'd love to get a picture with with our ULA labor. All right. We are moving on to the next part of our agenda. Um, we're going to, I'm going to open this time for public comments. If there are any public comments. I'll take them now. I believe there was one. Um, Sam, did you want to just read that comment actually?
Uh, yeah, it was once submitted just in the chat uh, there towards the end of the discussion with Congressman Owens. It said. Uh, while the lake benefits from the improvements mentioned today, in what ways will local and state officials open doors to the local business to help bring commerce and recreation to you? That was submitted by Letter J.
That's a great question. Did you want to answer, Ben? Anybody have any comments?
Well, I have a lot of thoughts on that. Should I just go first? Um, I will say that we're hearing very similar comments as Jay mentioned. Um, and it's almost as if it's a timing thing. And um. There's got to be a balance. I think that they're waiting to hear from this community, whether it's ULA or um. Uh, their their city council or their mayor's, but um. There isn't anything prohibiting businesses, you know, from from obtaining licenses. To do business, to run restaurants, to be a part of the promenade, to engage in, you know, waterways and shoreline activities. So. Um, I think that what they may need to sit, hear from us is our signaling of support and endorsement for that to take place. I think that some are reticent because they do not want to overstep the speed and pace of the ULA. And I think they're also being um, sensitive to the conservation efforts of the lake. And we believe that there can be a balance. I'm confident that there can be a balance. I just think that they're waiting for. Something from our community, whatever how large or small that is, to signal green lights go. Good with confidence. Go, go, go to your city and get your business license with confidence. Create a business plan with confidence. Go ahead. And 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 start dreaming about your entrepreneurial venture, um, where the lake might be tied in. So I don't know what we could do as far as the campaign goes or a memo. But I know for one, the Chamber of Commerce would be excited to help broadcast that message so that they can. Um, you know, begin to contribute in a, in a, I think, fair, conservative, but yet. Um. Um, proactive way to enable commerce. I think that'll help the lake grow.
Something that we could do that we've all been working on. In the management fund, we talk about access and then our last um, discussions with the legislature, we talked about access to the legis- to the lake. And we just talked about it again with Burgess, with Representative Owens. And. That really is the connection for any community, any business is amplifying that those access points because that's where business begins. Where they can have that interaction. So maybe we do some kind of thing around that. Maybe we could work on that our next meeting and talk about something. Great.
They have a little bit of money that they could spend if with stewardship, with guard, you know, guardrails accountability so that, you know, we're not just stepping over. You know, any old thing to have to make a buck, but I think there's a way that it can be done well. Um, and I know that those around this room are the same mindset that that there's a balance in making that happen because they can contribute to the overall. You know, quality of life, but businesses can go a little bit deep on pockets. I don't want to lean in only on grants or leaning only on the gifts of. You know, Congressman Owens's stores that you opened or, you know, a one point five million. It just doesn't go that far, you know. Perhaps there's a strategy that we can. Broadcast the message that that we can be united in this. And I use that term very deliberately to become a destination, you know, like.
Yeah, and I think there's all sorts of types of businesses, like the wind sensor group that's here and they're working for us. That's a business that works really well with the lake. So there's all. Sorts of synergies that we can find. Any other comments from the public? Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and close our public comments and I just need uh. Well, and I'll just describe something really briefly for anybody that's looking at the minutes that'll be stitched together. When we took the pause to go take a picture, uh, our online audio and video got um disconnected and then it resumed. So. If you were on and then you weren't able to resume, that's what occurred. And if you are here again, thank you for being here until the last minute of the meeting. So with that, I need a motion for your. Thank you. That's the first and the second. All in favor? All right. Please come and get your tags for leaving the parking lot.